The original promise was that after we got access up and running that it could be done without heavy funding. I received information in a letter that I've given out tonight that I'll share some of and make copies to anybody who would like it. This is from Greg McDonald, professor of radio TV from UM. In the second paragraph of a four paragraph letter, he talks about, "The FCC allows municipalities charge franchise fee currently up to 5 percent. Beyond that municipality might be considered to be gouging the commission. Of course, the city could justify a larger fee than it could be allowable. Before 1984, the unquestioned allowable franchise fee was 3 percent. Then the commission decided to increase by 2 percent to the current 5 percent. It was argued that this increase might help support such services as public access along with other services." That 2 percent translates into 40 percent of the franchise fee collected by the city. Please understand, however, that the commission does not require public access, nor does it limit funding to the 2 percent of the franchise fee. Clearly, the city could spend all the franchise fee, conceivably even more than the franchise fee on access, and it could also spend less. He talks about Great Falls being the smallest access operation that he received data on. They provide $2,000 a year, and theirs is made up primarily of volunteers. Billings, which I think Mr. Loughlin referred to earlier, budget's $25,000 a year and provides some extra incentives if the access facility gets more funding. I've always supported access TV, but there's a limit that we should keep responsible to Missoula citizens and keep access going. I think $100,000 a year is a very generous amount. I'm encouraged that MCAT has now decided to negotiate further and encourage that others, as stated tonight, are interested in submitting a new RFP. At last budget meeting, Kelly did raise the question about, "Are we interested in providing access?" And my resounding answer was yes. And I think that the council's been real clear in that all the way along. We have budgeted for those of you who have got a lot of misinformation, which I think is unfortunate. We have allotted $50,000 through the end of the year. We've also allotted $50,000 through June of next year in the current budget. We've allotted $10,000 for consultant. We've allotted $5,000 for the League of Women Voters, $5,200 to put this on TV because it's the League of Women Voters that does it through the city. So right now, through the next year, through June 30th, we've allotted $115,200. So the council's been incredibly supportive of access television. And I will vote again, I think, voting against substitute motion and going back for RFPs and continue negotiation, which as far as I'm concerned would be MCAT, is, I think, the right thing to do.
Mr. Horton?
Again, the issue is whether or not to accept this particular proposal. And I would call for a point of order because the person giving credit for making the motion never made the motion. I want to see if she can do it without being coached.
Well, it's very customary for the chair to restate motions for their clarification of the body, and unless there's some call beyond yours, Mr. Horton, we'll stay with the motion as it's been restated. I'll ask the clerk to restate the motion.
That was a completely different motion that you made than the one from what she made.
I was responding to Mr. Sampson's question, and I was trying to clarify what the motion was. I asked the clerk to state the motion, and if there's any objection to it, then we'll take it up in some way.
The clerk was going to rely on the tape to get the complete motion because here's what I had. I did not get it all written down while I was writing it as the mayor was speaking, but I had to take to the table something, and then I believe for the MCAT response to the request for proposals. But if somebody could repeat it, it would certainly help.
Mrs. Shea?
I think part of the confusion is that I started with the, secondly, with the substitute motion, and then I spoke to it, and perhaps the, what I said following was actually clearer. And so I will refer to that point that I said at the last part, that the city and MCAT immediately begin negotiations. MCAT and the council have not had the opportunity to hammer it out. Negotiations and the art of negotiations themselves are essential. Please allow MCAT to bring its revised proposal to the table on Thursday afternoon. And that is in reference to the RFP, and I would so move.
Chuck, can you handle that as a motion?
Yeah, we'll just reconstruct it from the tape. I mean, but I think the gist of it is that city and MCAT will immediately begin negotiations on Thursday afternoon. I mean, we'll reconstruct the exact wording from the tape, but I can't write that fast.
Mr. Sampson?
A little bit more clarification on it, I guess. Your intention is to send this issue back to committee for the purposes of negotiations of MCAT's proposal. Is that, is that what you're doing?
To negotiate with MCAT and their proposal, yes. That includes, it includes whatever changes MCAT makes and the city makes. It's a very open-ended proposal because it includes the ability to negotiate, which has not happened yet. I hope that's helpful. Mr. Sampson?
Mr. Sampson?
I think there's two different issues from the standpoint of negotiations because if it is, if I remember correctly, on what was stated in committee by MCAT before, there's the existing contract that we have with MCAT gives the ability to negotiate a continuation of that contract on it. So there's two possibilities of negotiations on it. And I was just trying to get it clear in my mind what you were attempting to do. I think there's a, I think we can reject the proposal, which I would urge us to do. I think we should reject the proposal, go out for another RFP. If we do not get satisfactory RFP, we can always attempt to continue an existing contract with MCAT.
Ms. Rosenleaf?
I want to speak to that possibility because I know that folks have kind of considered that. And from the standpoint of the people who work at MCAT, I think that's a very bad deal for them. We have before us a proposal. Elaine's motion would allow negotiation on that proposal and modifications that MCAT has brought forward this evening. If we go out for another RFP, that'll, that'll take another three and a half months because it'll take a long time for people to be able to respond to that proposal. That'll be a significant amount of work for anyone who decides to respond. Then, of course, we'll receive those proposals and go through the process of reviewing them. And then we'd have to make some modifications to the budget because the money is in the contingency fee and fund and so on. That would put us right up to January, and there might conceivably be a period of time in which, in which the station were closed, whether, whether or not there was a transition to another company. And if I worked at MCAT, I'd look for another job because I'm sure folks have to support their families and so on. I think that that's not respectful to them and the work that they're doing, and I think could be very disruptive in their ability to continue their services over the duration of the contract that we're currently paying for. So I would urge us not to do that, to try to work out a negotiation. And if that doesn't work, then we still can proceed to the RFP.
Mr. Sampson?
I've been on the council now for 10 years. This particular issue is the first time that I've ever had any amount, and I think any at all, but at least any amount of letters and phone calls from the general public objecting to an expenditure in the budget. We've had lots of cases of orchestration or lots of cases of community output of attempting to get us to spend money, but this is the first time that I have had a, I guess, a groundswell of people objecting to any increase in spending on this particular issue. And I, I cannot in good conscience vote to expend any more funds than we have expended in the past. The, in fact, I find some reluctance to even go up to the $100,000, but I voted to put the $100,000 in the budget. There's $50,000 for the continuation of the MCAT contract at the end of this year. There's an additional $50,000 in there that could extend a contract for cable access TV for the following six months on it. But we are getting a great deal of information, but the public has been given a great deal of misinformation. I've had a lot of phone calls that indicated that they were told by MCAT that if they didn't get down here tonight, where they're going to pull the plug on them. And nothing could be farther from the truth. I have never heard anyone in the city council indicate a desire to stop public community access TV. I have never heard anyone on the city council indicate a reluctance to appear on public access TV that we, in addition to the $100,000, have to pay another $5,000 a year to allow MCAT to put us on TV. We have come up with that money for the last five years, and I think we're probably perfectly willing to come up with it for future years.
Any further discussion? Mr. Horton?
When the police department comes in and says that they have to have a minimum of seven new people on the force just to maintain the level of service that they have given in the past because of all the increased responsibility they've had, and they haven't gotten any extra people through all these annexations, they don't get all that they want. When the Office of Community Development comes in and says that they can't keep up with applications for subdivisions and reviewing those subdivisions and issuing permits in a timely manner, they have to have extra, they don't get all they want. We've got Animal Control, which is a city-county joint agency through the Health Department. They've got almost 300,000 miles on two trashed vehicles. They come in and say, "We've got to have this just to keep from getting further behind." There's no way they can maintain the level of service or increase the service or answer the calls. They're talking about maybe having to restrict their calls to revenue generating calls. They don't get all they want. Why is it that anybody thinks that all of a sudden, MCAT comes in with a request for proposal or with a proposal in answer to our request for proposals, and everybody's upset because they don't get all they want? Nobody gets all they want. And if we, if we accept this proposal, then we are giving them everything they want, and no other agency in the city gets that. And it's our job to try to make these decisions and to try to figure out where the money's going to wind up and how it's going to get there.
Curtis, if I could just respond to what puzzles me about the original motion that came out of the committee. I'm not sure I've ever seen anything like it. The situation that we face is not an unusual situation. We put out an RFP, we get a response to it, and then if we don't agree with everything that's in it, we sit down and negotiate. That's what we did with TCI. It's what we did with Satcom. We put out RFPs, we got a response to it, we didn't agree with everything that was in it, and so we sat down and negotiated. The city is very good at negotiating. We've had some hard negotiations over a great range of topics. I agree that there are topics with regard to MCAT's response to the RFP that need to be negotiated. And I have no doubt at all that the council will be a tough bargainer and that in the course of those negotiations, that it will protect the public's interest. What I don't understand and haven't had anybody explain to me is why we're departing from absolutely standard practice in this one case. Why we have not had one moment of negotiation with MCAT. Yes, if the, if those negotiations were to fail, then it would certainly be possible to reject the bid and to go out again. And that might happen, but it's entirely within the city's council's power to negotiate as long a time as it, as it needs to, to find out whether there's going to be any movement. So nobody that I know of is saying that MCAT has to get everything they've asked for. The council doesn't have to say that. All it has to do, and all the substitute motion does, is to say, "Let's do what we do in any other similar circumstance. Let's sit down and negotiate." And I simply, there must be some argument here that I just haven't heard yet as to why it is that in this case alone that we choose to tell somebody who in good faith responded to an RFP. And they took risks in responding to the RFP at the level that they did. Somebody might well have come in lower, and then the council could have just taken that other bid. Then there would have been no negotiations. But instead of that, MCAT came in with what they thought was a, was a fair proposal. They thought that it, that it was the way that they could provide the service. And, and now that's the only bid that we have before us. It seems to me that it's incumbent on us to at least sit down, put our concerns on the table, find out how they respond to those concerns before we reject the bid and make them go to all of the effort of submitting another bid. I think Kelly's arguments are very powerful arguments, that under those circumstances, that we're putting employees at a, at a great deal of uncertainty. And again, there's, nobody is saying that MCAT should get everything they want, but why we're not willing to negotiate with them is something that I'd like to have explained. Mr. Harrison?
First of all, Mr. Mayor, in reading the proposal that came out of cable TV, I didn't see anything unclear about it. Number one, this is not a negotiation. This is a contracted service. If we had a contractor that bid on a road, and he was the only one, he responded to a request for proposal, and he was the only one that, that came in, and, and we wanted to reject his bid and go back out, we'd do that without even thinking about it. And we'd use the argument that we should have more than one to look at. I think if, if we talk about negotiation, I think if you just look at the dynamics of negotiation, to begin, to begin a negotiation on MCAT's proposal puts the city at an immediate disadvantage. I mean, we're already talking higher than what we ever would have looked at. Basically, when it comes down to it, I think I'm going to vote for rejecting the proposal submitted by MCAT. While I respect several of the people that have used the facility, and I, and I do have a great deal of respect for several of the people, I think they've done real quality work, I just simply can't support spending this kind of money at this time. Looking at the budget projections submitted by MCAT for the next few years, there are significant increases. The city of Missoula's payout to MCAT would be as follows. In 1993, we paid the $100,000. That's exactly what we contracted for, and we would fulfill that obligation. In 1994, that $100,000 jumps up to $141,000. In 1995, that goes to $148,000. In 1996, that goes to $155,000. And just a footnote, council meetings will be aired whether this money is spent or not because we contracted with the League of Women Voters for somewhere around $5,000 to air this meeting here. At this point in time, in this state, we're looking at a major tax reform movement. I think it's incumbent on us to make wise use of this money. I don't see how contracting with someone, at least at this level, to run a TV station fits into any list of priorities that the city might have. You know, in this, in this particular city, we have some very urgent needs, especially in social, social services and other areas. We have people in their 70s working in preschools trying to supplement $350 to $400 social security checks. We have people who are allowing leans on their property so that the city can expand our sidewalks and our sewers. This money can be used in other ways. Like I said, this is not a negotiation. It's a contracted service. I have supported public access in the past. I probably will in the future. However, I believe we need to take a real hard look at the money that we're spending, and this is, and the time is now to do it.
Mrs. Shea?
Perhaps this is one last comment on, on a very sad discussion of an important issue. Doug, I agree with you. There are a lot of important programs and needs that we have in the community, and fiscal responsibility is something that I take to heart. I personally don't agree with everything that MCAT is asking for and wouldn't vote for it. However, I think it's very important, and I think it's incumbent upon us as public elected officials to represent our constituencies as best we can, and perhaps the majority of you on council are doing that. I know that my constituency has been very vocal, and I told this to Curtis Horton when he called me on the phone tonight, about support of MCAT, 10 to 1, and visits in person plus letters. What I think the potential here is that we can, the negotiations, the hammering and out, the sitting down, does not preclude arriving at a different point so that we are fiscally responsible and so that MCAT gets perhaps not exactly what they're looking for, but the city can meet its fiscal responsibility needs, and MCAT is allowed to use the public right of way and a community access programming that was intended to be used that way. Dennis Taylor suggested that MCAT go through the normal budgeting process, and I felt this year that, and this is my personal opinion, that I'll state, that the majority of this council was very reluctant to do that, that there were a lot of excuses. And I felt that MCAT, and this is again my personal opinion, was treated as somewhat of, almost a stepchild in the process, and not like other programs that the city has some, some jurisdiction over. I do believe that MCAT meets very close scrutiny, the way that any program would. But I think that we're not taking the common sense approach here. I think we're cutting off a lifeline before it has had an opportunity to really be the best, most effective service that it can provide. MCAT is clearly willing to negotiate with the city to iron out a mutually acceptable arrangement, and most of the council doesn't seem to be able to say yes to that.
Further discussion? The question then arises on the motion, and I will restate the motion again, that the council enter into negotiations with MCAT on the terms of MCAT's response to the city's RFP. I'll ask for a roll call vote. Yes, this is the substitute motion. Yes.
On the substitute motion, Horton, Loughlin, Potts, Rosenleaf, Sampson, Schaefer, Shea, Craig, Gingarelli, Harrison, Hermes. Motion fails. Four ayes, seven nays. The ayes being Craig, Gingarelli, Rosenleaf, and Shea.
We'll revert now to the original motion. Mrs. Shea?
I would add to the original motion, an amendment that would be, and that we send out a new request for proposal.
You've heard the amendment. Without objection, we'll incorporate the amendment into the motion. Chuck?
I was just going to suggest some clarification to that. Do you want to make any changes to the request for proposal? In that case, I think you should discuss that in committee. Your motion, as I hear it, would say to send out the same RFP right now, so...
No, I said a new request proposal.
But you're, you're ordering that to be done, and we don't know what you want in it, so you might want to go back to committee and discuss what you want in it.
I guess I just assumed that it would go back to committee.
Not with your motion, as I understand it, but...
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, then I would amend it to, to, it would reject the, the present proposal and to send it back to committee to work out a new request for proposal.
Without objection, we'll accept that as the motion. Mr. Sampson?
Yeah, I was going to say perhaps a more proper method might be to reject the, the proposal as the motion says and make a referral of a new RFP to the Cable Committee on it.
Mrs. Schaefer?
That's fine with me, whatever way is the best way to do it. I just don't want to lose the whole thing.
Let's make, before we discuss it, let's make sure that we know what the motion is. My understanding is that the motion would be to reject MCAT's response to the RFP and to return the, the matter to the Cable TV Committee to devise a new RFP. Is that correct? Al? Okay. All right. Mrs. Gingarelli?
I would speak against that amendment. I think we're treating a group of, of employees who have done a very decent job in a very shabby manner, and it's embarrassing to me frankly. And I can, I could see this if, you know, MCAT had clearly done a poor job, but I don't think anybody here thinks that that's the case. If, if MCAT had done a poor job of providing access, then I'd be in favor of rejecting their proposal too. I may not be in favor of their full amount. I don't frankly see, understand what the fear is to negotiate with them. It's bizarre. I don't think that changing the RFP in the middle of the course here is, is very proper treatment of, of a process that's, that's been handled decently by MCAT. I agree with the statement before that it isn't their fault that no one else happened to submit a proposal, so I do not support that amendment.
Any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Harrison?
I particularly don't think there's any fear here. I'm just not willing to pay anyone $141,000 next year to do this, and I, or anywhere close, so, so I will support the motion. I don't know, it has nothing to do with MCAT per se. It's a contracted service. It's just like any of the other contracted services. I realize there are real people that made good efforts, that, that have done probably an excellent job in this area, but it's still our job to prioritize the community's money.
Ms. Rosenleaf?
I cannot support the motion or the amendment. I, I am concerned because I think, again, that the council has made an error in its process which has led community citizens down the wrong path. So we put out an RFP that said that, that we were interested in funding up to 75 percent of the franchise fee, which in fact is more than $100,000, even by the mayor's calculation and Chuck's calculation that they explained to us in the budget meetings. MCAT made a different calculation, I think, using a legitimate process, but it's a different calculation, and therefore the numbers that they came up with were different. Then they also submitted basically an enhancement request for a government access coordinator, which, which they felt was optional and which they had been willing to withdraw. So I think the fact that they came in over $100,000, and now I'm hearing on the part of the council, a decision that many people do not want to fund more than $100,000. I'm, I'm willing to discuss that, and that might be fine, but that's not the RFP we put out, so I do think we owe them a negotiation.
Mrs. Shea?
Well, clearly, I can't support the motion, the new motion or the amendment to the motion. RFPs, as I understand, and perhaps I'm just more familiar with federal RFPs, are very, very strict, and I guess that the city...
very strict and I guess that the city can do what it chooses to do, but I believe that we're, that we are scrutinized by the public as well and so I'm, I really consider this a, a question of process. If we wanted something specific in the RFP, then it should have been there and to reject it on that matter alone is, is, I think is incorrect and inappropriate. I know that, for example, Mountain Lion is going through the RFP process for the new management and they have to be so very careful, the screening that they do, to base any opinion directly on what they required in the RFP and so they're, they're really using fidelity to that. I think that we can, with this motion, we can dilute community access programming to the extent that people won't understand it, they won't use it and they won't care about it. And that's what I'm fighting for because I think the concept of community access programming, whether it's the, in the PEG formula, whether it's public, whether it's educational or whether it's governmental, those are all important, but if we diluted and say, "Oh, well, this department will do this kind of programming and we'll keep MCAT out of that," and then we dilute MCAT down to, to, to a, a, a formula that just doesn't, isn't strong enough, then that just raises a larger question. So, no to this motion.
Mr. Horton.
These past two weeks, I've gotten a great number of calls from local businessmen, community leaders and a large number of my constituents, more than I have on any other issue since I've been on the council in almost two years. I got one call from a 15-year-old kid who wanted to know why we were going to take MCAT off the air and when I explained that wasn't the issue, that was fine with him. Even at 15, he understood that we had to review budgets. I got a great number of calls from other people who objected to the way this money was being spent in any amount. And I guess it's a question of, are we getting good value for our money and whether or not we believe that we are, can we do better? And I believe that if you were about to buy a new car from a local dealership and there was only one in town and you suddenly found out that a new dealership was about to open up, you might want to wait and see what they had to offer. You might want to compare the two. And I think probably it's in the best interest of fiscal responsibility to see what can be offered and make a decision from there.
I just have to say something although I realize that we're definitely beating a dead horse here and the, the vote is pretty well cast, but especially with, with Doug Harrison, I, I always listen carefully to your arguments because I, I, they generally make sense to me and, and tonight I, I haven't yet figured out what's going on. I, I can't make sense of the argument. I can understand exactly what you're saying about setting priorities and needing to set priorities and I understand that that might mean that we don't want to spend more than $100,000. That, that it, it might be anything, but, but the fact is that we haven't even tried for a moment to find out whether we can reach agreement with MCAT on that or not. And what we know is that first of all, it's not MCAT that's changed its mind about what the ground rules are, it's the city council. The council put out an RFP. MCAT responded to that RFP and with the exception of, of the possibility of an add-on for governmental access, which I appreciate, that was, that was simply trying to provide us with an option we wouldn't have had otherwise, with that exception, they were within the bounds of, of the RFP. Now the council has decided that it wants to take a different approach, but it won't even sit down with MCAT and find out whether MCAT, the one responsible bidder, is willing to meet our terms or not. So, what I see us doing is spending actually a lot more money because we're going to go out with another RFP. We're going to have to evaluate the RFP. We know that MCAT is actually going to use public money, has no choice but to use public money if, if they're going to respond to the RFP. And it, and for what? Instead of sitting down and negotiating with them. So, it, it, there's, there's just something still that remains totally unanswered for me and what really concerns me about it is that it deepens the perception in the public mind that we don't know what we're doing here.
Yes, um, there's been a couple of things that happened. I think this proposal was first talked about, this request for proposal was talked about somewhere around March 1st in that area. Since then, the sales tax failed and there's a, a movement about to limit income taxes. Now, if, if we take this in a, in a very narrow context in the city of Missoula, in this room here, then it's a wonderful idea, we have this franchise fee money and we can spend it any way we want. But the truth is, if this limitation of income tax proposal does go through and, I don't know, maybe some people go for it, maybe some people won't, I'm going to guess that it goes through. I think there's going to be some real stress on social services and we can ignore that, we can act like it's not happening, but I think that's not responsible.
Thank you, Doug. Mr. Sampson.
Yeah, I for one don't feel that I owe a, an apology for anyone or does the council owe an apology for turning down a proposal that they do not think is proper and adequate?
Any further discussion? Mr. Loughlin.
I think I smell three o'clock coming. Dan, through your chair to the cable TV people, the representatives that are present, you've heard the discussions tonight, so you only accept $100,000 as the old contract and we can kill this right here tonight, one way or the other, just say yea or nay.
Well, I don't think that we should enter into negotiations on the council floor. Ms., Ms. Rosenleaf. We don't, I'm sorry, but we, we're not able to recognize you, Randy. Mrs. Schaefer.
I think we are doing committee work now on the floor and I would call for the vote or whatever motion I need to...
Motion for the previous question.
Motion for the previous question.
Okay, you've heard the motion to cut off debate. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. The question now arises on the motion to reject MCAT's response to the request for proposal and to refer the matter to the Cable TV Committee for the development of a new request for proposal. Roll call vote? Well, we just incorporated the amendment.
On the amended original motion. Loughlin, Potts, Rosenleaf, Sampson, Schaefer, Shea, Craig, Gingarelli, Harrison, Hermes, Horton. Motion passed, 7-4, with Craig, Gingarelli, Rosenleaf and Shea voting against.
Finance and License Committee, Mr. Sampson.